He doesn't do anything, he ran a fever on Friday.
Wanted to start up a business or anything. Whatever doing.
Be great.
I was pretty good old building. Only does start.
Better start doing something. Been here.
Take a minute. Is it a what?
We got a couple minutes.
One left for you. Ready for a run like a bad.
Oh, yeah. Shouldn't have done the new one I had to do. I got done like thirty block here.
Digging into cable? Nope.
Working on locator on it. Use it once. Located when it gets eight degrees quits. So you have to tie a cooler around for it, isn't it? Finally got it down so I shipped it off. Get it put on. There goes Saint Louis, let's go.
Thank you Lord for this day and thank you for bringing us this meeting and keep your hand upon us. In his name we ask him in. Blessed are you.
United States of America. The Constitution stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Margaret. May fourteenth, Board of Alderman met in regular session with Mayor Steve Peters presiding. Alderman present, Rick Winter, Dot Krickcizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, David Bu, Rick Yocum. Absent none. Mayor Peters called the meeting to order and gave the invocation. The pledge of allegiance was recited by those present. Menace of the April ninth meeting were read and approved. Collectors and treasurers reports were given. Kathy Poore, city collector, reported that ninety-eight percent of the real property taxes and ninety-five percent of the personal property taxes have been collected for two thousand seventeen. She also noted that eight property owners owe for two years of taxes and these will be turned over to the county collector and advertised for sale if they have not been paid by July. Peggy College, city treasurer, met with the board. She reviewed the city's two thousand seventeen audit, which was prepared by Wage Stables, PC certified public accountants. The only significant deficiency was a lack of segregation of duties, which is normally difficult to accomplish within a small organization. This has been evaluated and determined that it is not financially feasible to segregate all duties. It was also noted that the city treasurer reviews all reports on a monthly basis. The board reviewed an application for a building permit submitted by Mark Twain Communications to build a twelve by twenty foot concrete shelter building at three oh three North Main Street. A one hundred and ninety foot communications tower would also be erected at this same site. Motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Rick Winter to approve the permit for Mark Twain Communications. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Ryan Mason and seconded by David Bu to pay all bills as presented. Motion carried unanimously. Neco Mendez informed the board that the city of Edina is a member of the Chamber of Commerce and consent of representative to the chamber meetings. She said the farmer's market has a new date and time this year. Vendors are invited to set up on the courthouse lawn every Friday, eleven AM to seven PM. Philip Spory addressed the board, asking if they had the opportunity to look at his proposal for development of the Edina City Lake property. There was a consensus with the board regarding development of the area, but concerned about the cost of maintenance. He suggested that a good starting point for development would include a walking trail, sand volleyball, swimming area, and primitive campsites, so the maintenance would be minimal. Motion was made by Rick Yocum and seconded by David Bu to authorize Philip Spory to seek funding on behalf of the city to develop the lake property. Motion carried unanimously. It was agreed that Philip would be allowed the rest of the year to seek funding on behalf of the city. Deb Melendez, a resident of Edina and city employee, met with the board. She requested permission to pursue a project to raise funds for improvements at Miller Friendship Park and the old city park in the northeast part of town. Deb shared her thoughts about having an annual spring concert at Miller Park utilizing some of the local young talent. She said she thought she could obtain enough sponsors for this type of event. Motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Ryan Mason for Deb to pursue this fund raising project. Motion carried unanimously. Joe Dimmitt, superintendent of utilities, met with the board. He presented a copy of Mike's monthly report for the wastewater treatment plant. Joe said his crew has been busy cleaning out road tubes and doing ditch work all over town. He said Deb has painted most of the playground equipment at Miller Park. There was some discussion about the lighting at Miller Park and the fact that electricity is no longer available at the shelter houses. Joe agreed to get someone to check into this before the next meeting. Dimmitt presented a map of the city to the board, which was marked into five sections. He proposed a five-year plan for street work completing one section each year. No action was taken by the board at this time. Ryan Bishop, chief of police, met with the board. He reported that he has been working with John Shaw regarding the condition of the building north of the citizens' bank. He also said he has received a request for additional stop signs at the intersection of North Fourth Street and East Church Street. There was a considerable amount of discussion and the consideration of putting in the speed bump to slow the traffic down. No action was taken at this time, but this will be revisited next month. Ryan said he has sent out some notices to some residents that have junk and derelict vehicles on their property and are in violation of ordinance number six twenty-one. He said door hangers are being used for property owners or occupants that have an excessive growth of noxious weeds, plants, or grass, which is a violation of ordinance number six ninety. Mayor Peters said the trash is picked up in town on a regular basis and should not be set out at any other time. Notification we put in the sentinel reminding residents. Mayor Peters said he was contacted by the fire department chief, Martin Edwards, regarding a pumper truck for the fire department. He said the fire department is looking for a used pumper truck and would appreciate some monetary assistance from the city when they locate one. The board agreed that they would be able to support the fire department in some manner when they locate a truck. Mayor Peters reported that he has been approached about the condition of the sidewalk on the east side of the square in front of Insurance Matters and the MU Extension Office. Steve said the sidewalk is lower than the street and excessive rain causes problems for these two businesses. There was discussion, but no action was taken by the board. Mayor Peters presented to the board a proposal for the trash department, which would reduce pickup in Edina to one day a week and the other day would be for pickup in bearing. Steve had estimates of the revenue and expenses which showed a profit for the city. He also suggested that these funds could then be used for the street repairs and maintenance in Edina. No action was taken by the board at this time. Mayor Peters nominated Rick Winters to be the mayor pro tem. Motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Dot Krickcizer to approve the appointment of Rick Winter as mayor pro tem. Motion carried unanimously. Motion was made by Rick Winter and seconded by David Bu to close a portion of the meeting pursuant to six one oh point oh two one three. Hiring, firing, discipling, or promoting of particular employees by a public governmental body when personal information about the employee is discussed or recorded. Roll call vote was taken. Eyes, Rick Winter, Dot Krickcizer, Delmar Strange, Ryan Mason, David Bu, Rick Winter, nays, none. Motion carried and the meeting was closed. When the board returned to open session, motion was made by David Bu and seconded by Ryan Mason to adjourn. Motion carried and the meeting was adjourned. Any additions, corrections?
Collections for May two thousand eighteen. Water, twenty thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and thirty-two cents. Sewer, twenty-two thousand, thirty-six dollars, fifty-nine cents. Sanitation, fifteen thousand, one hundred thirty-eight dollars and sixty-one cents. General fund, six thousand, nine eighty-five, eighty-six. Recreation, two hundred eighty-five, fifty-four. Street, four hundred nineteen and twenty-five cents. Special lights, twenty-two, fourteen. Meter deposits, one thousand, four hundred fifty dollars. For a total collected of sixty-seven thousand, one hundred twenty-eight dollars and thirty-one cents. I have the final notices to go out to the eight real estate owners that haven't paid for two years. Other than that, the taxes are about the same as last month.
No, usually as long as everybody has it, but then it'll be filed for autumn, yeah.
Okay, make any questions about it?
It was a pretty huge motion, I think, was the. Except we spent more than we received.
There you go.
I'll make a motion to pay the bills.
All in favor? I propose. All right. Citizens' comments, everybody.
Couple of handouts where Paul does. You got one down there?
Yeah, yeah, I got you.
I know all of that.
All right. You mind if I sit here? So anyway, what we've got is a plan. I know Steve's kind of familiar with it. We're working on the north side of the courthouse where the bathrooms are with the existing entrances. I'm sure you've all seen it, it's crumbling, all kinds of this repair. We were planning on fixing that this year and as we were going along, we got thinking if we're gonna do it, let's make it to where it's handicap accessible and, you know, potentially fully ADA compliant and everything. Well, in the process, of course, we know there's been, you know, a sewer issue there as well. And we have plans to go from the existing drain out to the, out to the street, run a new storm sewer, because ours is just not any good anymore. Run a new storm sewer to the east and across the street and drain out that ditch. I don't have the, that's, that's kind of changed somewhat since these original plans have been drawn. I do have a copy of it if you really want to see it. Where it's at in here, I don't have copies for everybody. Essentially, I guess what we're asking is permission to, to run a storm sewer drain across the, the North Fourth Street there to the, to the east in order to drain our, our rainwater there. Pretty much just be what fell in that area. There will be a drop inlet right at the corner where the existing is.
If ours, we're gonna drop ours. It'd be a deeper drop, pull we can't, we're just gonna dump ours, we got new grates there, basically. They're just gonna dupper dupper.
It has to be deeper because of my grain.
This is just for the bathrooms, see, is where it's at direct when you go in.
How far do you gotta go out to, where you gonna dump it though?
Well, you're gonna go out the street and then they're gonna turn and go east. And then it'll come out somewhere along Casey's building, somewhere.
Lucky's there, have to be out somewhere.
Down somewhere. Somewhere in that ditch down through there.
Storm drain or anything, or just run out to the road?
It's a storm drain, be down into the ditch, there's, and beyond.
See, right now it goes right to sewer. Any water goes down or goes to sewer, which that's what we're wanting to. We want water out of our sewer, and so that's what, see, we done all the downsides. They just dump out the street now. They used to, whether they went to sewer or they didn't, but.
I was just trying to think, because all the water ran down, it's gonna have that pretty good place to go.
My ditch.
Yeah, right to your house.
But it'll come out somewhere.
There wouldn't be that much.
Lucky's somewhere by the alley, somewhere that tub and alley, somewhere down in there, you know.
Should be much more, more water come through there than what already does. I mean, it's just gonna go pretty much whatever lands in that. Yeah, oh, I know. I know where he's wanting, right? There will be some rock ditch liner beyond the exit point of the tunnel as well.
You know, they want to spend a lot of money up there and it's clay tile, so if you built all that on top, like you're building on a time bomb anyway, if you don't fix it now, I mean, it looks like, you know.
So if we're across this fourth street there, that would be. I mean, we would have to remove our two.
If we're.
I'm sorry, right here. Right, that too would just go away. And our drains would just go deeper and drop into.
It will be dug out and dug deeper.
Right.
At our expense, we'd do it all. Now, here's the, you know, it's not gonna be in the exact same location where you go.
Maybe a little bit farther from.
The plans say abandon current, current storm sewer, infrastructure, existing flow lines shall continue to.
But it's still do away.
So I think it's, I think it's actually gonna stay.
Yeah.
Where it's at, this one's gonna be below that.
Right.
So.
But it would just be ours would just, ours would just come out because we, you know, it wouldn't, can't have above it, so. I would think, you know, it's up to you.
I'm not gonna guarantee that that one's getting taken out because from the way, from the way the plans look, I don't know that it is.
They might not, might leave it there, so.
But it's gonna be, it's not gonna be, they're not gonna be stacked up or anything, it's actually, because it, the existing grain's not quite right on the corner.
Right.
This one will be, it'll be right there on the corner.
It may be, may, may not, it could be an organ, maybe to dump it into that, I don't know for the city, but. Basically, your guys are gonna, this county is paying for it. I mean, it's not gonna be.
We're trying to.
It's gotta be.
Of course, taking care of it and.
That's what the city asks us to do.
Yeah.
But we are crossing your old street, so.
Have your blessing.
When, what are you thinking about when would this pop to take place?
It should be pretty quick. Of course, let out bids and accepted a bidder today, actually, so.
You're accepting bids today, you said?
Yeah, we, well, we, we opened bids last Friday, we did accept a bid today.
What is the four inch, you mean, that conflict with that?
It potentially, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure how, how quick or contractor bill to go. Seventy-seven, something like that, so.
What side of tile are you putting in on?
We're doing a six inch to the corner and then twelve inch from there.
On that across the bridge.
There on that.
It's gonna be down, house gonna rain anything. It'll cut back on the sewer.
I've seen issues with it, you know, but that's the, you know. Yeah, just something they need to, to do, to address, you know, and stuff, so.
You guys just gotta be of agreement that it's okay to do, whether you want, need to do it by vote or however, however you wanna do it.
You see, I'm in record, you see.
I'll go ahead and do it.
Yeah, I need to, might put a vote till we vote, you know, make sure that it's all, you know, somebody make a motion that we give permission to do that.
I'm making sure that we give permission.
So what about the, everybody just treated me torn up, right?
Right, but that's, yeah, they're gonna fix it.
We'll take care of it. It'll be back to satisfy everyone.
Yeah, that's not a issue.
Do we need to probably run something in the paper?
And we've been working on trying to get somebody into, finally got it done, forty thousand on getting it down and getting the lot fixed up there. But we think it's, it's, it was something that needed to get done. When windows are falling out of it onto the sidewalk below, why, that's not a good thing and rough caved in on it. But it's really hard to get people in here to do stuff like that.
It looks good, I mean, it looks real nice for the.
Well. You have to just work with what you got.
That's right, yeah.
And every time you get into something like this, we thought we were gonna get it done for around twenty-five and, but you keep running into different things. First thing we ran into was a little bit of floor that was asbestos and that was another four thousand dollar. Then we found out that half of the building on the southeast corner was hooked on to the Love Building and the south, and the northeast corner was hooked on to Mike Clucky's building, or Mark Clucky's buildings. And we didn't know that, we thought it was all one building. So then we had to work with two, two other building owners and make sure that they, they felt good about everything at the end of it. So just fair warning, you know, as these things come up, they're always gonna, gonna take more than, than what you thought. This one across the way here, we thought we were gonna get by with fifty on it, we ended up with seventy-eight in it. So, but that was twenty-six years ago.
Yeah.
So, things have gotten a lot more expensive. But Steve and I were talking the other day about the sidewalks around here and where the Herne Bill, where the Parson Noonan Building came out, they had a couple of concrete abutments that went clear down into the, into the basement. And they pulled those out, put those in the bottom of the hole and, and we filled around them. So we're gonna have to do a little work on the sidewalk there. And then when the machines came in on the west side of the, the White Building there.
That old Hatville Building.
Hatville Building. They broke up some sidewalk there. And so I, I told Steve that we're gonna be, we're gonna be wanting to do some sidewalk repair there. I've had a couple of people tell me that there's been some elderly people that have been trying to get into the closed closet over here and they're tripping over some of the sidewalks. Nobody's fallen yet, but I've got, got a look at it, it's, it's shifting there too. So we're gonna have to do some work there. So if something happens over on that side, if Bob Ward gives, gives you a bid, send him to me too. I'd like to have him, because the more we can get him to do up here, probably, you know, it's gonna help everybody out with getting it done. And didn't know, I've already talked to Closed Closet about it and so we're, we're already starting to do a little back and forth, preparing for, for maybe trying to do that because it is, it is, it is pretty bad. But.
Is this actually out on the sidewalk out in front of it, is what we're talking about?
Yeah, yeah, it's the one right up next to the street there. But there's, oh, one piece of it's up that, that high. So we need to get that out, need to get it fixed. So we're gonna be looking at trying to get that done, this done over here. If, if we can work it in with, with the east side of the square, that would be fine with us. So whatever, however that progresses, keep me informed and we'll see if we can put some more work there to help Bob.
I talked to them today and so they've kind of told me what they would like to do, don't they? You know, what they feel they would put in on, so we're just gonna have to see what we're at for marriage stuff, you know.
Okay.
Then we'll get with you and kind of see what.
And, you know, you were saying, is, is the city interested in helping on this at all?
Well, we're at the point, yeah, at two, at certain, that's things we need to talk about. I don't know where, you know, we're really at on sidewalks. I don't, you know, well, I don't know where we really stand. I mean, they're ours, but yet they're, we've never really had a, I understand we've not really ever had a.
We don't have a plan in place.
Yeah, to replace and stuff.
Margaret, did, did we ever have a policy here of if, if the homeowner bought the concrete and the city would pay for having it put in?
No, we always, we talked about doing.
But we never did anything on it, right?
We never put it in place, no.
Okay. Well, it, it's not gonna be a problem for us, but I was just wanting to know for the other people, whether or not, because all of this over here is gonna be on us, all of this over here, we'll split with Closed Closet. But.
Well, that's where we're, like I say, I talked to them, commission today and I've got what they feel they'll, they would put in on a bids, it's Extension Office. I talked to Roger, because that's their business and I have not talked to none of them, but I'm just, you know, to, they kind of told me where they, what they would, and I've got a bid on that, of what he said he would do those three there for, so.
Okay, who's got the one, the, the part of it?
Robert Ward said on that over there to do in front of three buildings was forty-five hundred dollars.
Okay, is he going on out to Highway six?
No, that'd just be in front of the buildings.
Just in front of the buildings?
In front of the buildings.
But that would take care of the, the water problem?
A bid. And then they said there that they would put in eleven hundred dollars, is what they felt, you know.
We have to tear it out, city has to tear it out, right?
That, I'm sorry, we would tear it out. Now, that's city tearing it out and then he would do all the, the labor and that's the labor in the concrete.
In-kind contribution then if we did the, we're tearing it out.
Yeah, we would, that would be the city, you know, wanting to turn up the whole concrete that we have there, which I don't think we could do that, that's not, we have to get it under, back on stuff, so. But that's where we're at on that and that's where the, they said today that, that if they figured they would, somewhere around eleven hundred dollars they would put in on it, you know, maybe a little more, but. So, you know, that's leaving us at thirty, that'd be a thirty-four hundred dollars left on that, you know. We was gonna get with you guys and see if, if that's something that you have, that you bring for your board if you're interested in anything on that, that's a.
Well, like I said, we're, we're gonna be doing, doing this here and we'll take care of our share on it. And then, but we would like to, if we can help.
Yeah.
Get, get the rest of it done, why.
But that's where we're kind of at on that, somewhere around the three mark, you know, somewhere three to thirty-four hundred, what we would have left on this over here. And that's, that would go from Card Wells, basically in front of three businesses and that sticks in the curb. They would do the curb just like they did over on the park, basically gonna put it ten inches deep and it really won't be a curb because the street is so high that there's not much of a way to put a curb on it. So they're, basically what he was talking, going ten inches deep out in the front and then that would just be the curb like it is over in the park, Robert done that over on the, on the courtyard there. So would be in front of the three buildings.
Okay.
So what he give me, it was, you know, I think the sidewalk, we could probably, I think our guys could get together, we could probably run the sidewalk. It's not big, cut it way down, I think, you know, we can do that cheaper down the road, but that's, that's where we're at on that.
Well, just kind of keep me informed.
Yeah.
On, on your progress and we'll try and.
And I'm sure.
Get our project working with you.
Throw a couple more bids at him, we might get it done a little cheaper if he could have.
Yeah.
He's got three places to go here, he might, you know.
Might make it a little bit more worth his time to stay here, so. Okay, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Okay, ready for the tree department. Joe couldn't be with us tonight, so he left me up, up for here stuff. On the sewer plant, uh, all operations at the plant are normal, cycles are good, hold eighteen loads of sludge, about forty more to go. UV is great after the bulb insulation sprayed, the ball field, and fence again today, six eighteen eighteen. If you have any question, feel free to call me, Mike. So, I think everything's running good down there. I do know we have a very severe water leak down there. Uh, it started leaking again over the weekend, and so, uh, we better get that fixed. That's in Joe's report here, uh, it's leaking again, to try whether they fixed it, the oil lines just wore out. So, so he's got a few of the water line replacements, sewer plant, uh, four hundred and sixty feet, two inch pipe, forty-nine cents a foot, and that's a good regular rubber, if you knock the glue together, it's a good, good pipe. Uh, he was waiting for, uh, for them to come and mark it. And was talked today, he said it'd be a lot better, and I think it would be too, is to trench it in, not backhoe it across there, cause you got such a hole.
Depends on what you got to dig is around, if there's nothing there, the digs are your line, but you got a lot of lines, that you'll have to hoe it in.
Well, I said, don't think you see any lines up in the yard where they want, you could trench most of it, and then when we get down where the lines, you'll have to dig. But just to go across where the grass is, you probably wouldn't be near as severe to cut a trench like this, is to take a, you know.
Time to.
He said something about maybe going up and renting a trencher or something, I said, now, let's just go talk to the boy down here, blow the blue room, he trenches very reasonably, he's got a good little trencher there. He's very reasonable, keeps the business there in town. You know, trenching just as cheap as going up and renting one and hauling it down here.
But you can't rent anymore. You won't rent a trencher.
Huh?
They won't rent a trencher to you no more.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, I mean, there's people around, I probably do, but I, I know this boy down there trenches very, what's that, very reasonable.
How big, you trimming it, about five inches?
Yeah.
That's a small one, a bigger one, you go up to two foot. Again, they won't rent a trencher. Oh, a two inch line, that's what.
We will pay for that real quick, because this water leak is.
It's cheaper though.
We're paying for this every day. Well, no, I don't think it's too, not quite that severe, but he said it's the size of a garden hose or smaller, and that's. That's around all weekend, so I mean, it's, we've gotta do something pretty quick on it, cause it just, you dig it up, after the chance, you're gonna break again if you pour out. So, I do know he's, uh, he's already priced a line, and just waiting to see if we wanna, wait, they didn't cut it today, I don't think they marked it, they're just waiting for them to.
Right, yeah.
Marked up, line and stuff, so. Uh, he got, uh, he's just still waiting back on bids for the electric repairs, replacements and stuff down to the ball field, or down to the park. And then what else they done, they've done some ditch mowing, uh, they've been jetting out a lot of tubes, brush trimming, hauling off the brush, and people's been trimming trees, and we kinda got. Hauled off a lot, quite a lot of brush and stuff. So I don't know where this is wet, I don't want that to hurt, I guess somebody needed to wash, we did at City Bar, and our pole saw was disappeared, which are telescopic pole saw that we trim trees with and stuff. So, we no longer have a pole saw, there's been a few people in the past that borrowed it, they said they've contacted everybody, that they know might have borrowed it, we don't have pole saw no more.
I've contacted some, I've contacted some on it.
So, he does have bids on a new one, it is something that they use a lot as a pole saw, I mean, trimming trees, it's, to think you're just gonna go out and do a mow on the bucket truck, you'll just wear yourself out with this little stuff, so.
We had that one a long time.
Yeah, we had that one, it was there two years ago, I mean, and it wasn't new when, uh, when I was there, you know, but I don't know how long, how old it is, but. They got a farm bid, couple bids, Farm and Home and Gene's Small Engines, it's not a lot different from price, uh, fourteen inch bar, six forty-nine, six hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, twelve inch bar is, uh, five ninety-nine, then Gene's is six twenty-nine.
They came, they came down on their price because they had one in stock.
I had one in stock, okay.
Yeah, they came down to twenty dollars, cause theirs was the same.
Yeah, I thought usually steel stays, has stayed the same, so, you know, we buy here in town.
That's why, that's why they made less was because.
So, same price on that one, so, he just was wondering whether, you know, buy a new one or what, you know, we don't have one no more, and I don't, can't find that one, so. Unfortunately, we didn't get much choice, I guess, you know, so, you know, it is something that is used a lot, so, I don't. Where went, who knows, that's trouble, I told him, you know, they walk away from the barn, it's easy for somebody to walk in, or nobody there. So I told him, maybe we need to try to fix up someplace to set the chainsaws and set stuff where we can lock them up, cause I mean, it's just, it, I know it happened ten or fifteen years ago at the old barn, I think chainsaws got stolen or something, so. It's pretty easy for it to happen, so, you know, they're not gonna walk in, pick up a wall, they're just gonna, they can sure pick up stuff, stuff like that, pretty easy, you know? So, I, I, I don't see much option, but, you know, tell me to get one, I don't know, you know, might have to have one. Might as well get the fourteen inch bar one, I guess, I mean, there's not fifty dollar difference, that's not, not a lot of difference, but, you know, two inches, there's quite a little bit on those, so. I guess we'll just tell him to go ahead and mark, you know, and just have to get one, or get him order one, or whatever.
Farm and Home?
I'm sorry?
Farm and Home?
Farm and Homes, yeah, cause they're basically their same price, I mean, they are in town, you know, their business here in town, so. If, you know, Gene's, it'd have been a hundred dollar cheaper, be a little different, but he's not, you know, he's only raising twenty dollars. Farm and Homes better order one, they're same price otherwise, so, steel pretty well makes them stay in the same price range, so.
Just the consensus of the board then, that go with Farm and Home?
I don't think we have to really, well, no, just as everybody thinks, it's, you know, it's all right with that, so. Uh, that's on that, okay, that brings us down to the, uh, on the trash proposal. People got questions on that? We're, we're ready to talk about it here. Did you read that, that I gave you last month?
Yeah.
So, uh, on the trash pickup, if we do that, how are you gonna do that, you gonna do that by stickers, or?
We're gonna do it by stickers, I told them, if we do it over there, we're gonna do it by stickers, just like we do here. Now, one thing, Ryan and I went to a meeting, we've been number two, two days to a meeting, and one big thing that they stressed, for small communities. And Ryan verified all of us, you know, the lawyers there said, we've been here, and we've worked for cities, and we've worked for big cities, little cities, done it their whole life. And they said, if one thing a small community needs to do, if you have something you can, said some small community stills make their own water. If you can sell it to somebody in the rural, sell it. If you can get rural people to hook into your sewer, make it worth your time, do it. Cause that's how you make things work. It's the same thing we have that, I talked to fifteen different towns down there, and nobody, Memphis is the only one I, nobody I talked to down there. Said, oh, we wished we had our own trash truck, but we don't, we fire, we fire it out.
Everybody contacts that.
They says, oh, if we had a trash truck, it'd be so great, cause we pay so much out for trash. And, you know, and nobody I could talk to, I found nobody, one town, they said, six months ago, they went once a, once a week, said it saved us so much money. Because nobody you can find picks up twice, they just don't do it.
That's true.
And I know people.
That was my only concern, I guess. That was my only concern, is going from two times a week to once a week.
But it, what I, what I wanna do on this is, if I do something like that, cause I'm looking to generate, you know, funds, I'm looking to generate money, I'm looking to make things work for us. It's one thing we have that we can make money with, we can make work for us. So we'll come back, if we do this, we'll come back on Thursdays and run all our dumpsters, take care of all of our businesses. You know, that's, we, we definitely is gonna do that, that won't be a, a not, you know, and so, you know, a lot of people, if you drive, and like I asked Debbie, I drove it two years ago, I asked Debbie today. When you go back on Thursdays, you pick up, lots of times, you go down the streets, you pick up half or less of what you picked up on Mondays, so you're driving down the same street for, you pick up ten bags on Monday, you're picking up. Three or four, possibly five on, on Thursdays, or if you're driving on a street, burning the same fuel, and wearing tear on streets and stuff, you know? So, you know, if you got, I mean, I'll try to answer questions if I can, I mean, I went around, I mean, uh, I, I, when I shot them a bid on it, it's, it's higher than stickers. Uh, when we charge out of town on Wednesday trash, is it the same price as ours?
Yes, out of town, people, they bring theirs in.
Yeah, that's something we need to think, that's things they stress down after those meetings was, you know, it's ours, and so they let us, we need to raise those prices. We, we need to, you know, these people need to pay twenty dollars instead of sixteen for their sticker, because these are our streets, they're our dumpsters, they're our trucks, and. We've gotta start, you know, when we're charging in the same, they're getting our, our stuff that we pay for, and, and they're getting, they're getting the use of it, and, you know, and so. We, we just gonna have to, you know, yeah, if they wanna take your trash somewhere else, I guess, you know, they can, but they're not going to, because, you know, so. You know, that's something we need to look at, we need to raise our price of our stickers, what I shot them a price was over there, was, is like a two thirty-five a sticker, which is not a lot, but that adds up, that's more than what we pay here in town. And your dumpsters, I raised the price on what we pay, what dumpsters pay here, I raised all those prices on the dumpsters over there for them. And it's, you know, the profit's there, but you, you know, if you drop that day here, I know people won't like it, but they'll get used to it. But if you just have one go over on Wednesday, go up, now you gotta figure the wear and tear on the truck, you gotta figure two man's land, man hours, you, now it's a whole different, a whole different ballgame, there's not nearly the profit there, see, because you're doing that, so.
So are they, the, excuse me, are they, are they in a contract with the company that picks up the trash?
They're individually, the town is not, they're just individually, they get a bill individually, and that's basically the same way we would do it. It's just a monthly deal, the way I get it, everybody I've talked to over there, which I've just been talking to Kelly, which is Mary, you know, over there and stuff. And, uh, she's talked to the business, and everybody's come in over there, you know, for, cause it saves them money, and it makes us money, but, uh.
How will they get their stickers if they have?
It would be the same with the out of town people, that they're just gonna have to pay the city home, and then when they come in, they'll just have to come and pick them up and do whatever, cause I told her, I said, we won't do it no other way. Because we're not gonna pick up a bag if it doesn't have a sticker on it, if you bottom line, it's the only way to do it, you're like here in town, it's the best thing we ever done, because you can't, but then if a sticker, we don't pick it up, I mean, it's just, uh, and so, you know.
So we're gonna go to fifteen and stop, and how far are you going back east?
I'm sorry?
Are you going through town to Highway fifteen and stopping, or is that?
Well, we just, you know, you make a loop, and if you wanna pick up some extra dumpers, dumpsters, you can start picking up, you know.
No, what I, what I mean is, is if, if we decide to do this, and you go through town.
Right.
Where, where do you, where do you end picking up trash?
Just right in town, it's just basically.
You don't go to the old A D M and pick up that trash?
Well, you can come in, that way come out, yeah.
Well, I mean, I just didn't know how far he was gonna go.
I would just go and make a circle, and then come back in, double A, whatever.
Right.
You know, you can make it, you know, cause you can, you can pick up a few dumpsters, and see how it works out, and then we say, oh, we've got more room, we, we can't crowd the truck, we can't crowd it so much, we're. Going to take the third trip, and for four or five tons, see, that won't work, but if it does, and then you can add more dumpsters to it, you're right there. Cause there's, you know, when you're picking them up on the way, and you, and you know, when you go like that, or you're picking them up on that way, you're going down six, it makes you money every time you go on the way.
So is Bering Lake on that same job?
If it's, if they choose to go with us, see, that, that's strictly up to.
Right.
People, what they wanna do.
You would leave it up to the individuals?
There are individuals over there, they're not by the town, they're just individually, they, if, they send them a bill to everybody over there.
Well, the Lakes, don't the Lakes got their own dumpster?
No, they, they, they got them down there.
We, a couple weeks ago, they, they called us to bring a dumpster over.
Well, I mean, they got a dumpster, like, we don't have to go in and pick up trash.
Oh, no.
It's, no, 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 they got a dumpster, they bring it down over to the dam, right, cause you're going to.
See, that company wasn't coming back for, after the holiday, so they wouldn't be there three days more in there to, you know, load them trash, so.
Just like we took one out, and we took one out to Seaver Bering Lake, because they, they, they didn't wanna bring one, they would, whatever, so. We made them a deal that we took one out there, it's, yeah, a hundred and twenty-three dollars, whatever it is, a month, enough in cover two weeks, that's just money, that, it don't make nothing, set down the bar.
Yeah.
And so, but it's.
We got enough dumpsters to, I mean, I, we got.
We would have to buy more, just like right now, we need to buy more dumpsters anyway, because we're out of dumpsters now, just right now.
People rent them, you know, the temporary dumpsters for two weeks.
Right, we use them, so it's something we need, actually more to the city, we need more dumpsters anyway, and it'd be, this is nothing's gonna happen next week, if we decide that anything can happen. The next week, we're talking forty-five, sixty days down the road, by the time you get everybody swished, and you get this, you get dumpsters ordered, and you see how many you need, and things like that.
So what would you, how would do your billing, if you bill it out, would you do actually, when they come in, they get signed up, or would they, you just end up sending them, mailing their bills out to them, and they pay them that way?
Yeah, same way, anybody out of town, it's no different than billing the school, it's no different billing anybody that's outside the city limits, it's all bill sake.
So, are we billing the town, or we're billing?
No, you have to, you have to bill individually, just like out of town trash, it's just like, right now, I mean, whoever lives outside the city limits, bringing Wednesday, they're going.
Okay. Right, they come in here.
They come in here, they gotta come and get their stickers, or they're not gonna, they're not gonna be.
So maybe then, when they pick up their stickers, or do you bill them?
They, they come in and, and sign up for trash, you know, ones out of town here, and then we put them on their billing system, and they're billed once a month. They can mail their checks in, and we can actually mail stickers out, uh, if they put a note on it that they need them mailed, otherwise, and sometimes people don't just pay monthly, the ones that, especially out of town, they'll pay three months at a time, or. You know, they don't wanna mess with that whole bill every month.
It'd be, it's no different than billing, and it's no different, I talked to Tom, and it, it's no different any, long as it's for the betterment of the city. You can't do it and use that truck for betterment, better us, or just say, I'm gonna go out and, oh, we're gonna pick up this, and we're gonna make this money, and give everybody a raise, it's bar, can't do that, that would be for the betterment of the city, and that's what it's for.
So you said you could use that money for the streets, you can't do that.
No, you can't do that, so what you can do, like I talked to Peggy, is you can, the trash truck drives over our streets, and you can take a percentage off the top of that for damage of the streets. And you can take it off of this, and put it on the streets, cause if that truck, cause if that truck didn't drive over a lot of streets, and never get the truck drove back, so it does damage our streets, and you take a percentage off here. Then you put this right back in, and then you're right back where you was. It, it, it just, you take it out of one and put it in another, but you can show damage, and I can show you, especially this truck is doing more damage than the old one did, because we had a tag on the old one, this one, tan them, it, it slides, and it. And the hotter it gets, the more damage it's doing, I mean, the corners, and so, that's just gonna take one day that we're not driving down my road, or yours, or anybody else's, that it's. It's one day that we're not doing damage to the road, cause the hotter it gets, it's like an afternoon, you can see where it, you can just see where it turns, I went home today, and you can just see where it makes a turn, you know, because it just drags that. It, it can't help it, it's gonna drag it.
That's just truck.
That's just weather belt, you know, the old one had a tag, but we needed more capacity, and so that's all you can do. But it, it's grinding on the tires, it, it hurts on the tires, and it hurts, so, if we can, you know, we get away, cause, you know, here, it's a lot of, lot of turning around town, where you. You, you're just driving down the road, and you're picking up some dumpsters, and you're doing this, it's not nearly as much wear and tear on, on the truck and stuff.
So where will the money go if it can't, like, only a fraction of it goes to the streets, does it have to go back into, like, a new trash truck when it's time?
Yeah, absolutely, and that just.
We'll have to be purchasing dumpsters.
Yes, and, and buying dumpsters, and just, that's, if we have that much more in that account, it's just the taxpayers' dollars.
Paying employees.
Pay for that new truck, or pay for those dumpsters.
And that money can help, like.
It can be somebody out of town making that.
Salaries or whatever, okay.
But Steve? I think if we go for one day a week, we, we'd have to have additional dumpsters for people to throw trash in, you know, the, because the dumpsters we have.
I'm sorry?
The businesses you'll hit twice.
Absolutely, they'll never change, it'll be the same.
I mean dumpsters, there's one dumpster at the barn for people that.
Right, but even though, even if you dump it, you can dump it two or three times a week, if you have to, a lot of people from town, that's why not on Thursdays as much, some people take it down anyway, and put it in there, because it's, you know.
It's pretty full, a full old night.
If they need to add extra trash, and they wanna throw it in there, they can take it down there, you know? I, I, I do, you know, they do, I do, a lot of people do, so it, it just.
What if we had, like, a dumpster over, Barry, I guess somebody asked them, throwing stuff in it, if we had a dumpster where everybody, just to throw their trash into, and all we'd have to do is go and pick that dumpster, dump it, and do that.
Well, see, what they got over there now, and they said they wanna get away from it, that's kind of what they have a little bit now. Uh, they have, they got like five or six dumpsters sitting in town of Barry, not at businesses, and they wanna get away from that, cause it looks trashy. Now, they've got them sitting there, and they got, they said they got four, five, six houses that are throwing this one down, so, they said they're backing in, it's hard on their tubes, and their driveways, and they're mashing the tube down, and so, that's what they wanna get away from, they just want. They just would rather have something out by the curb, where we don't, and set it, and that's where they're gonna put it. So they actually only got four dumpsters, I think, at businesses, is what they've got. There's either four or five, she told me, they just wanna get away from, they want them people, but they said, we can't make them do it. But that's what they're, they can pass an ordinance, it, it, it does, you know, they said, that's just like us, we don't want them setting.
I was just saying for time, you just, you just go and grab it, it won't take.
No, two hours.
It won't even take that.
Right, it won't take very much time, so you just.
Ride over, turn around and come right back.
And we can come back here, and you can pick up, run our dumpsters here, and and, you know, pick up what we have to here and stuff, so it's.
But Steve, I pay city taxes that support that trash truck. If you're gonna put that out to Bering, they need to pay good for, other than sixteen or twenty dollars a month. It would hurt them paying thirty-two a month, they're paying a lot more than that now.
I I'm gonna stop this, and we'll knock this in the head right now, ready?
What's that?
Okay, I don't wanna be sharp with you, but you cannot comment from then and next.
Oh, I'm talking about just because it's my tax dollars.
I, it makes no difference, you cannot say anything in the meeting, it's against the law.
I am a citizen.
No, you cannot, it's against the law for you, because you are Alex's councilman for one year, you can come to the meetings, but you cannot voice opinion on it.
Okay.
I I don't mean to be rude, but that's right here in black and white, and I've brought the book, if you want me to prove it to you. You can ask Ryan, am I right?
Isn't there, it's not being influenced on?
Yeah, nobody, you can't influence a vote.
Well, it's just my tax dollars, what I was concerned.
Now, if you wanna be a citizen, citizens' comments, if you have something wrong at your house, or you have something wrong like that, you can address us. But as far as addressing an issue to influence a vote, you can't do it.
I don't know that, no, what, if I'm not arguing with you about it?
Now, if you want me to, Ryan, I I give it to Ryan, if he can take it, and he can shut to me.
Nope, no, I'm not arguing with you about it now.
If you need to, I can't, I don't, I don't mean to be rude, but I'm just, I'm just saying the way it is, because I don't wanna get, us in trouble as a board, and I don't wanna get, you know, anybody in trouble, so, okay. So, if anybody has any more questions, like I say, it's gonna be a trial, I told Debbie today, we was talking, she asked me about it, and I said. You're you're just gonna have, you may have to pick up, she was worried, I don't know that I can hold all that, well, I said, no, you're not, you know, you're not considering. You pick up five or six ton on Thursdays, and they pick up seven and eight on Mondays, but I said, you you're not gonna dump some other dumpsters, you're only gonna dump them on Monday, so you're not, that's where she gets most of her weight. Say, on Thursdays, so I said, you only dump them once on Monday, now you're gonna come back when the truck's empty for Bering, you're gonna dump them again on Thursday, she was thinking, I can't make two rounds, two, but you're dropping off all the dumpsters, so you're only gonna dump them once on Monday, you can't dump them twice, so.
So how many dumpsters will we need over there?
Right now, all they have is four businesses, but it it goes from, if Bering wants, you know, that, if they want to, if you pick up, wanna pick up brick holders, you wanna pick up some of those people around, that's just on how many you want to do.
I'm just saying for the funding, or how many dumpsters we'll have to get to get started.
But that's a long-term investment, it's not something that's gonna be, you know, but that's just, you know.
Well, I think the lake has four yards, don't they, Steve?
Hmm?
The lake has four yard dumpsters over there, I think.
That's about all, everybody, to my knowings, that's basically the size they have, you know, there's fours and and twos, it might be a two yard or two, you know, so. I don't know the prices of dumpsters, uh, I know you all.
We bought some last year.
Yeah.
No, like on, like, the fourth is lie, I know the dumpsters get used a lot over there, and we have to make another trip, do we charge it for another dump?
Sure, if you just dump, yeah, you know, we're we're scheduled on dumping them once a, once a week, it's the same thing we do here in town, and if somebody needs an extra dump, then they pay for that. Dump, it's the way I always understand.
Well, on our temporary dumpsters, yeah.
Right, right, see, but they're, you're paid for one.
It's just temporary.
But I know it'll be running over.
But like, I think they have, is there such thing as a twenty yard or thirty yard?
I think during the fourth of July, that's what they have come in, and they're full, they're full, two days.
Yeah, running over, yeah.
So, might wanna set two sometime on fourth or something.
The last, last time we was over there, they, they did about a night for what, you know. We charged them for that, so.
But, it it's, you know. I'm burial suggestions to anybody, I'm just trying to see if we can generate some money to put on these streets and stuff, because we don't.
We got to come somewhere and get some money somewhere.
We don't have any, you know, you're not gonna do much street repair, but you're gonna get thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars a year, you're not gonna do much. And it just, you know, if somebody else has got a good suggestion, boy, I'm open for suggestions, you know, on it, but I just, it's the only thing we have that can make us, make us money. You know, so, uh. And so, you know, I don't, you know, it's all estimated, you can pick up more dumpsters, you can go. You know, it can be higher than that, it can be lower than that, I just, you know, I'm just saying, they got approximately forty-five houses, you may not get them all, you know, I I do know.
When do they need to know by?
They, they just said they're, they gotta meet tomorrow night, they just, it's one of them deals, it's just whenever, you know.
I didn't know if they was contracted for like a year to come in there and dump or not, I didn't know.
Not to my, not the way that I got it from them, that they said, we can call them next, next week.
That's why the dumpster, you just call, cancel, gonna get you dumped.
Yeah, yeah, as far as I know, everything they have, with the novelty is totally different, I talked to novelty down there, novelty, they they contract, the whole town's contracted with them. And they brought, they brought in barrels, trash barrels, but that's all they put, that's as much as they can have, they can have no more, that's all, you know. So I know the whole town is contracted, it's a little different, they, over there, they're just, like, are out of town, they're just individuals, and I think probably there's people from Bering probably contracted. Around the Bering area, probably comes over here anyway, I know some do.
Yeah.
That that would have, would have contracts with them anyway, you know, but I think they can call at any time and say, you know, pick up my dumpster, I don't, you know, I want your services no more. I know that's, my brother's got a dumpster with him, he can call him anytime and say, you know, it's not a year contract, it's, you know, you can come get, you know, so, but that's, you know.
It's part of setting prices.
I just showed the price item, because I just.
Oh, I assume the city attorney will have to.
But, he said, if, if it's a contract with the whole city, then he said, we could write them specs, but he said, if it's, if it's just an individual, he said, it's no different job than trash. Now, he said, if you're gonna write a contract with the whole city and say, well, you'd wanna write a contract, okay, then you're gonna guarantee us, that you'll pick up for a year, you're gonna pick up two years, whether, so you don't lose them. But he said, if it's, if it's individuals, it's just, it's strictly, he said, it's no different, what you're doing today, say, it's no different than water, because it is no different, like I say, so, that's. You know, I I can't imagine dropping too much, because it's, it's it's quite, right now, they pay fifty dollars, fifty dollars a month, that's what they pay. Fifty bucks a month, that's for sixteen bags.
Residential, basic, basic about?
Yeah, one guy told me he had a two yard dumpster, and he said, they pay ninety-five dollars a month for a two yard dumpster. That that's, that's pretty steep, you know.
Steve, so what are you looking at?
Hmm?
What are you looking at, the price was, or?
What I, I just come in here and I ask them what we charge here, and so I would, like, uh. We charge like eighty-three dollars, is what Kathy told me, and so we charge like McCarty's, was eighty-three dollars for a four yard, I charge, I figured ninety-five. You know, on a four yard, because you're gonna be there anyway, you know, I I mean, stickers, we pay two dollars, you know, I figured hers figures out like two dollars thirty-five cents, I said thirty-seven fifty for sixteen bags, so. Ours is sixteen, ours is, you know, we get, so it's, you know, if more than what we, more than what we pay. You know, you you can adjust that some, I I'm just, I just had to throw a figure out and say, this is where, you know, kind of where we're at, you know, uh, but that's, you know.
Yeah, we would need to figure what they would pay for a monthly rate, because currently, we we charge sixteen, and a lot of times, people will come in and say, oh, I just wanna buy some of those stickers, well, no.
No, no, they're, they're.
We're charging you for a service.
I told them, they did.
Then you get eight stickers.
Yes, I told them, you either have to go buy eight, or say, if you want sixteen stickers, then we have to do that, I said, you can get more if you want them.
Right, you can always buy more.
You're gonna, you're gonna pay, they pay, they pay forty-nine dollars whether they put a bag out or not, right now.
Right.
And the most bags they put out is sixteen bags with a thirty pound, and the most they can put out, and they get, they they charge, they're charged forty-nine dollars, and it's like, forty-nine, she showed me, they're forty-nine fifty. That's what they're paying, if they don't put out any bags, they pay forty-nine fifty, you know, they pay, just like us, we're gonna pay, well, you put it out or not.
Right.
So, that's, that's what they charge them over there right now, so.
Just a question, uh, for those of us who live in in Edina, uh, and our trash is gonna go to one day a week pickup, is our fee for the month going to remain? Where it is now, or is it gonna be cut?
What's that?
Will the fee be cut back because we're only getting?
You still can have the same amount of bags, John, see, that has nothing really to do with that, you still can put it, you still put out your eight bags, you can put them all out, you know, you still can put out, your two a week is what you're, I'm odded right now, unless you buy more. It has nothing to do with, you're still gonna have the same amount of bags. Say, it'd be the same, we're still gonna haul the same amount of trash down there, whether you're separately housed, or you decide you wanna take them down and throw in the dumpster, you know.
But it's not the same, and and I would argue with those citizens that it's not the same. Maybe you only have two bags on Monday, can't put out two bags if you don't have two bags, but come Thursday, you would have needed to put out a bag, and you can't do it, because, no, you don't have it.
Well, that's just, it's called change, I mean, you you know, you, there's no other way.
I've had a lot of citizens call me after I've hit the center, and everyone is against it.
I've had a soul cell worry to me about it.
I'm getting a lot of citizens called.
But it's, it's like a lot of things, what, two years ago, they told us we was picking it up too quick.
Oh, yeah.
Remember that, don't you?
Yeah, right.
They had a fit, because we was picking up too quick, but I see the last one we put out in the paper, it said seven A M, I don't mean on that side of town or over here, it's to be out at seven A M. So, that's just change, what it is, I mean, but again, if you can come up with some other way that we can. Cut, or we can do, or we can generate money some other way, I'm all ears, I'm ready.
But I I, I don't have a problem with it, but I have heard people talking about it, and there's, some of the older people are concerned that now then their trash just went up fifty percent. Or a hundred percent, basically.
I mean.
Because they looked at it as a service, not bags of trash, but as a service, and for, and I've lived other places, and my trash was three or four times more than what this is. But the people that live here are gonna have a, are gonna have some questions for you, so you might as well get ready to answer some questions, because they're gonna, they're gonna think you're raising their. Fee fifty, you know, a hundred percent, because they're only gonna get one-time service, that sixteen dollars wasn't for eight bags, that sixteen dollars was for two times a week, that's the way they looked at it. So, you know, I I think it's a good idea, and I think, you know, but you're gonna have some splaining to do, you know.
That's where, that's where Kathy and I come in.
You're gonna be the splainers.
We'll be the front line.
But it's just, you know.
But we just don't have the population that we used to have, that's just it, I mean, if we had another seventeen people, you'd understand.
It just, it gets down to, John, it gets down to, if we don't generate money for streets.
Yep.
Would you rather drive down a rock road, or would you rather have your trash picked up twice?
I paid seventy dollars a month in Joplin, Missouri for one time a week.
Yeah.
So I'm happy with one time a week, six people, okay?
Everybody, I mean, I talked to Memphis, I went, I've talked to every town around everywhere, and stuff, and and you know, and it just, but I'm saying, I'm I'm.
Well, we definitely don't.
That's why I took this here, you know, but I'm.
We don't wanna lose our truck, that's, that's.
We gotta make change somehow.
Contracting somebody else out down the road.
Yeah, you know, so.
Yeah.
It just, you know. I understand what people would say, I understand that, what you're talking about, but I, you know, half the time, we don't put one out on Thursday, maybe a lot of people don't, but I mean, I'm I'm sure a lot of people do, there's a lot of people do, but.
It's convenient that if you have an extra one in the middle of the week, you can put it out on Thursday.
That's always, because I forget Monday, so.
The holidays, my food challenge.
Yeah, it does, but that's, you know. Most of them will fall on, you know, our weekends, or on Monday, we're still picking up on Tuesday, we're picking up on Monday, you know, because we stay there our same day, we're staying the same day on either Monday or. If it's a holiday, we're gonna pick it up on Tuesday, so that you're gonna have your weekends all gonna be covered, you know.
Monday's probably the best day.
See, we pick up on Mondays now, and.
Don't you think?
Hmm?
Keep them to nun, if you would do once a week, Monday would be the best.
Yeah, I would say. Because you know, there's a holiday, there are more weekends, and if you don't, if there's a holiday on Monday, you're gonna pick up on Tuesday, so you're taking care of all your holiday trash and your weekend trash, but, I like say, it just. Um, I like say.
Well, that's recycling, that's a good thing, because that's a cat, my crap.
I had citizens tell me that more people are gonna just throw their stuff in the recycling, that we get trash in there now, so.
Well, I guess if they can throw it in there, they can take it down to this dumpster at the barn.
It would think.
If they forget or have another day.
I'm leaving it to you guys, I I just saw, there there it is, that's, you know, I'm I don't, I'm not the one about it, so, that's, I I don't. I live with it either way, so, that's.
I'm in for revenue.
Hmm?
I'm in for revenue, we gotta have some revenue.
That's why I'm here, but I, you know, I I I, you know, it's.
Do we need, we, do we need to wait, seeing how many people have signed up in Bering, if the individually signed up? You know what I'm saying?
Makes no difference on that, because you can pick up so many, they they add to it later.
I mean, how many people would that go, sign up for it, I mean.
You know, they just, like I said, they just send notes, all they can do is send out letters to all their residents, that's what they'll do, and.
Well, I think what Ryan's saying, if if you only got two or three people doing it, then it wouldn't be worth it.
Well, you're not, you're not gonna have that, I mean, I'm sorry, but you're gonna pick up a lot of dumpsters and stuff, if they don't want to live in town of Bering, I'll find dumpsters and stuff like, so you 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 can make it up somewhere, uh, you know, I I.
The country club, for my, said they do it, wouldn't they?
Who's that?
The country club said they do it, didn't they?
Oh, is Bering?
Bering.
I I'm sure that. I don't think they have a problem with it, I mean, every business, she's talked to every business, and she said, I've talked to probably twenty people over there, absolutely, it'd be kinda silly if you didn't wanna save money.
Well, yeah, for them too, yeah.
But but now that's, you know, that's, but, you know, some of it, like I said, some of them live right in Bering, I know, and there are customers that. It'd be a lot better if they picked it up in front of my house, I didn't have, I've already done a thought in there, but, but that's strictly, you know, some of them, I don't know, you know, you can. Yeah, yeah, we can just say, yeah, if we wanna do it, and then we can say, you know, you can run up, uh, say, will you tell us how many people wants to do, see what your response is, and we have, you know, two, that's not a, that's not a. But they don't wanna go through there, if we say, anyway, we're gonna do that for five people, you know, we're not gonna do, you know, so, but that's strictly up to what anybody wants to do, I made it for. If there was some other way to, to make revenue, I I'd be all for that, too. But that's. Okay.
Pricing, do we need to build on that?
Yeah, just, that's.
What would it cost for an individual from Bering to sign up for the monthly trash pickup?
Yeah.
Does it say that on there?
Very tough.
Thirty-seven fifty?
Yeah, and that was for, I guess, sixteen bags, like I said, that's already figured.
So.
Third, third, you know.
But that's for a month.
Well, that was sixteen dollars, I'm afraid. Say, we get eight bags for sixteen, so if you double, that's thirty-two dollars, that's that's a dollar more than.
But I mean, that's paying for a monthly rate, we pay sixteen, they pay that.
We're about.
Why wouldn't they get the same amount of trash stickers?
But they want, they get sixteen, so they said, well, just figure it on sixteen, be different if you drop them down.
Well, if they get sixteen, then then you and I, if we live next door, we can go together.
No, you're not.
We could.
They just said they get sixteen bags.
What I mean is.
They just said, that's what they get about, they can throw them in, you know, I said, do you wanna figure it eight, they can get eight stickers, they can, we can figure it at sixteen, you can figure it at eight stickers a month, they just said, the way they had it was sixteen.
I just mean sixteen is enough, my gosh, if you told people in Edina they got sixteen stickers a month.
Well, they can have if they wanna buy them, and if they get sixteen, they wanna buy them.
Well, no, but I mean, eight's what we give out, and we're saying we give them sixteen, so.
They just said that they, they don't put that many up, they can put up to sixteen for that fifty dollars, they can put up to six, they can put sixteen bags, like I said, that one week, but then they'll never pick up another bag there the rest of the time.
Well, we need to do the same as ours.
But essentially, you're just charging per sticker.
Their price will have to go. Yeah, they'll be charging more, but we want to do the same price wise.
You're just charging per sticker.
If we had sixteen stickers, sure, it'd be thirty-two dollars, and we're paying two dollars a sticker, that's thirty-two dollars, and that's. And that's figuring about five dollars.
But if we buy more stickers, how much is it?
It's two dollars a sticker if you wanna buy extras.
If you want more, they're same price for the.
I, but I do, I still do say that me and my little old lady friend that lives next door, I'll just have it in my name, and we'll put our trash out together. And we'll split the cost, I mean, thirty-seven fifty, just split it.
Be same difference, it'd be same difference here, if I little old lady lived beside me and I said, I'm on a.
You don't have a choice.
You gotta pay a sir.
Okay.
It's all mandatory.
So you have to have a, we have to have their name and address.
Right.
It's like, same.
But, I'm still saying the lady next door.
Well, out of town.
Well, just make your ten bags for, for a week, that'll be eight bags.
What's the difference here if an out of town trash person? Says, I want sixteen, they come in to buy them, they're sixteen dollars, now I want, I want sixteen, so I'm gonna buy eight more stickers. Now my neighbor here, my neighbor over here, it's the same thing. They're gonna bring it, they're gonna take all through my household, and we're gonna take care of that trash, it's the same thing, Margaret.
Yeah.
And we, are out of town.
Except in Edina, of course.
Are out of town though, does the same thing.
We don't let them do that in Edina.
I'm not talking to Edina, I said, are out of town trash people would do the same thing, right?
Then if they want more, they can buy more.
So, so they, do they pay for like the service and buy the stickers, or they're just straight buying stickers?
Just basically buying the stickers.
Just buying the stickers, so it doesn't matter if they share them with their neighbors? Cause we're just charging for the stickers?
So we're not charging.
And the stickers will be more expensive for out of town than the in town is, alright?
I thought we were.
I just, I, I.
Charging them for the service. And giving them stickers.
Yeah.
I mean, we charge them thirty-seven fifty, and we give them the stickers.
But if somebody in Edina wanted sixteen stickers, you could just charge thirty-two dollars, you can triple thirty-two dollars, so.
No, everybody in Edina pays sixteen, across the board.
Right.
And then, if you decide you're doing spring cleaning, you can purchase more stickers. But, we have mandatory trash in Edina, and you don't have a choice. If you're somebody that recycles everything, and don't really wanna do the trash service, uh, it's too bad, you still pay.
I've got, I've been buying six, paying sixteen dollars a month for my trash. I've been getting eight stickers a month to put out. I have a pile of seventy-five stickers at my house.
Yeah.
So, can I, can I not get charged for the next seven months for the sixteen dollars?
Because we have mandatory.
No, we can't, it's the same thing as out of town, that's the same thing they'd be doing over there, so it's out of town, but the out of town does the same, does the same thing.
I have to pay sixteen dollars whether I put trash out or not.
Yeah, right.
Me too, me too.
So basically, the service will be in buying the stickers. And then, will you change the color of the stickers for the out of towners? Because, there's a lot of people in Edina that have a hundred extra stickers that they could just give the out of towners. So would we wanna change?
They're paid for it.
But they're still gonna be billed.
But in Edina.
They'll bill roughly.
I mean, didn't you say it was like, a little bit more for the out of towners? Here, it's two dollars per sticker.
But they gotta pay that bill before they'll pick it up.
They can buy eight or sixteen, whatever they wanna buy.
We give them eight, eight stickers for thirty, what, a month?
They just said they sixteen, so we went on that, I just figured on the sixteen, like I said, it can vary, this is not locked in concrete, no place.
That's what we're trying to figure out here.
Right, but I just told them, I said, what, you wanna figure, they said, well, you get sixteen bags. I said, well, we'll figure on sixteen bags, so, we pay, if you got sixteen bags in Edina, it's thirty-two dollars. If you, you know, you gotta pay sixteen, but if you want sixteen bags, it'll cost you thirty-two dollars.
But we have like, zero people that. But we have like, zero people that, um.
It has nothing to do with that, Margaret, has nothing to do, I'm just saying, if you want sixteen bags, it'll cost you thirty-two dollars. If you wanted eight more bags, right? Okay, okay.
Yeah, we can buy twenty.
And so, I just said, it, that's charging five dollars.
So what are we gonna charge them per month, for eight bags per month?
I think we should.
That's two bags of that, or two bags a week.
Two dollar and fifty cents a sticker.
And if they wanna buy anything extra.
Yep, they can buy them.
You can buy them.
Right.
So eight bags, not sixteen.
Up to sixteen bag.
Yeah, sixteen is two dollars, and then a half of that be another, twenty-four dollars? Sixteen be twenty dollars.
Basic down, or what?
You know, you're gonna charge them more, I said, they're gonna be like two fifty or.
Most people are just gonna do the basic, and two, two, two bags, about all they'll put out.
I don't think we should.
Charge them three dollars, I don't care.
Per sticker to them, I should say, it's a monthly fee, you know.
Months of fee.
Month of fee.
Exactly what Edina.
We have to get a limit on what you can use, what you can't use.
A monthly fee of thirty dollars for eight stickers.
No, that's, no, that's for sixteen, you can have cut that in half. Twenty dollars for eight. If you just figure stickers are two fifty, you know, that's fifty cents more than we pay, that's what everybody out of town ought to be paying anyway. They shouldn't be paying the same as what we pay anyway, but.
So they're, so they're paying twenty dollars for each sticker.
Our reasoning always was that they're bringing it in.
Yeah, so I think cost is nothing.
And if they want double the stickers, they pay forty bucks a month. Basically, two fifty a sticker.
It'll take you longer to drive over there to pick them up than it will.
Well, yeah, you just, like I said, you drive over, turn around and drive back.
Yeah. And if this works out, this.
Who were you talking about, were you talking about driving over?
I said, it'd almost take you just as long to drive over and pick everything up to be quick. It won't be very long. Probably be an hour and a half, hour and a half.
Maybe like, they could be that. Thirty minutes, fifteen minutes, you get our fifteen back, fifteen minutes, thirty minutes at tops. So, yeah, an hour tops.
But depending on people signed up.
If you get thirty houses, you know, I don't know, you get thirty houses, you know, I, I don't know what you're gonna get, I'm just, they just said that they're forty-five, approximately, you know.
Well, it goes lower rate.
Yeah.
There's no doubt.
You don't know? You know what it is?
Can I throw one more idea out?
Let her go. Yep.
People that are in Edina are paying for the service.
If you don't wanna pursue, then that's fine.
I, I think it's a good idea, but I think you need to take into consideration that there needs to be a monthly charge, whether they put any trash out or not. Everywhere that you go, because we're paying for the service and our trash in the city. And over there, they're just gonna be paying for you all to pick up their trash. You're charging them any service fee, so we're still paying for all the wear and tear on that truck. They need to have some service that they're paying for over there, too. And so you, you need to handle it pretty much the same as we've got it here.
You can throw it on them, I'll, I'll throw them in any bid you want, I just had to give, come up with some figure for throw it to them. I did, like I said, this is not in stone, I'm just saying. You wanna charge them fifty dollars like they're paying? They might go for it, I don't know, I did, don't take the well, you know, why would you change? But I'm just saying, you can come up with any figure you want, I don't care, I just had to say, just approximately is somewhere where we can be. You can charge them three dollars a sticker. Give them eight stickers, it's twenty-four dollars.
Twenty-four dollars a month.
That's twenty-four dollars a month, and, and guarantee us, you know, hopefully we get twenty-five or thirty houses. Our businesses, the dumpsters ain't no problem. There's about eight dumpsters over there right now, they said there could be no problem. All, every business said, absolutely, I'll call them tomorrow, bring one tomorrow, at three or four, bring a dumpster tomorrow. So, I, that's not an issue to get the dumpsters. You can get eight or ten or twelve dumpsters, yeah, we may have to buy some more, which we will. It's a long-term investment, it ain't like it's gonna be more out next month or next year, you know, it's a long-term investment. But, it's strictly up to.
Paying fifty, fifty dollars a month.
That's what they're paying right now.
The household.
Yeah. That's what they bill, they should make. Like I said, they never, she said, I never throw in sixteen bags, but that is what they bill them, basically figures out, you can put up to sixteen bags.
Well, why couldn't we cut that down by thirty-five or forty a month? And give them eight stickers, and then if you want more.
Yeah, so say, yeah, I.
Do about your sticker.
Get down, four, you know, four dollars a sticker, you know.
Yep.
Thirty-two bucks a month.
Well, that, that probably wouldn't work, cause some people might say, I just want, I just need four stickers.
Well, but it's, it's gonna be a base, like Margaret said, it's gonna be a base, you're gonna pay this month, you're gonna get this, now you can come over here and get.
More stickers.
You can get twenty-five more stickers, you don't wanna pay your three.
They still gonna be charged for it.
They're gonna pay a base, just like, you know. Yep, you can put a bag, I don't care, whatever, that's just there, that's the way it is. So.
I'll make a motion we. Charge the Bering residents twenty-eight dollars a month. For eight stickers.
And dumpsters?
As base.
Dumpsters, you can go. Whatever.
They're paying ninety-five now, right?
No, no, I don't know what they're paying now, I said, we charge eighty-three, like for McCarty's, and for four yards, and I just stood in the figure at ninety-five. I just know a guy told me he had a two yard dumpster, and he paying ninety-five for a two yard. I don't know what we charge for two yards, it's not even close to that, cause we're only charging eighty-three for a four, and that's McCarty's, and they're out of town. So I was going on basing it on there. And that wasn't what we was in town, that was, McCarty's is out of town, I know it's on the way, but, you know, but that's still, I went on that, that was. Uh, fourteen, fifteen dollars higher than what we get for it over there, so you're over there anyway, but somewhat, I have no idea what they paid for four yards. I just know what one guy told me, he paid for a two, no.
So, you said twenty-eight dollars a month for their service, and they get eight stickers, well then, if they wanna buy extra, they are, or how much is?
Well, you just have to figure what that figures out for stickers.
Yeah, well, it'd be three dollars if you were charging twenty-four, so it's gonna be a little over, I guess. Or you can just charge three dollars for extra stickers.
You can do that. And then three dollars for extra.
Yeah, that's what you said.
For what?
Three dollars for first sticker after their first eight.
Right.
Yeah, twenty-eight, you said twenty-eight dollars a month.
If they want more.
For the service, and they get eight stickers, and then three dollars a sticker if they want.
Yeah, that's fine.
Extras.
That's still saving them, cause most of them ain't gonna have their sixteen bags, that would just how they based it.
Yeah.
They said, they just based it on that, you could put up two sixteen bags, but they, they said, I, you know, three or four, and all that and a half. But they're still paying that base of, of forty, and basically fifty, so. So, that's. You know, dumpsters, you can go accordingly, I just, like I said.
So what's, what's a dumpster cost, four yards? Four yards.
Purchase one, you mean?
Huh?
You mean to purchase one?
Yeah, a new one.
Uh, last year, well, seven hundred and thirty-eight dollars for a four yard. And then, of course, there was some freight on top of that, we got it.
So six months would have paid for.
Yep, it don't take, you know, like I said, they're long-term, that's a long-term.
Well, I just said, what kind of money we have to invest before we have return?
The twos are gonna be, I'm just guessing, a two yard dumpster would probably be, probably around five.
Yeah, we don't usually do. We have many two yard buildings here.
A hundred building, another two, uh, flower shop's got a two, there's quite a few.
Community center, do they have a two?
But.
Mostly we have community centers. Yeah, it's four yard community center.
Four, yeah, yeah. Community centers are four, most of them are fours, there's two sixes, school's got a.
They used to say they didn't like it, the twos were kinda dinky.
Twos are, are kinda small, but like Hunter Building, it's enough for them down there, that's all they have, like I said, Flower Shop, they got a two.
Now, so I'm gonna tell them, since their trash. On, over there for construction containers, are we able to take? Construction containers over, for demolition? You know, like, free dine, if I wanted to get one to tear the roof off a house, put it in.
Of course, we take them over there too anyway, I mean, if they're, if there are.
Just for a residence.
Just for people that are, that they're trash people, we take them over there.
Right, right, we have that set up that we can do, we go put it in all the way, we, we have a great setup. Uh, we have an out of town. Charge for the temporary dumpsters.
Yeah.
Uh, and we have, uh, an extra charge for shingles, if anybody's shingling, because it's.
There's so much to turn, yeah.
Heavy. So it's charged extra. We don't have anything that we call construction dumpster specifically.
I just changled dumpsters.
Well, I mean, I could remodel, someone wants something to, to get there.
I've got the rates, I haven't.
We gotta turn that back off.
I'll turn that way, turn that off.
I agree. In town, so they have separate rates for out of town, in town, see, we don't even have a distinct for, the temporary dumpsters, except for the four, six, and the yard.
I did want all that, like you told me what.
Yeah, but the rural customers, four yard dumpster, the timber dumpster.
The timber.
Yeah, not the one that's set all the time, these are temporary.
Right, these are, these are where they would be, this is one's two weeks, and, yeah.
Yeah, you're talking about, yeah, once we have the recharge.
What we have here, and this is what we've got, see, there's one like, they're, they're full time, that's what they'll be over there.
How much is that? Serve the trash.
Yeah.
That's like, like the party's heads up there, and that's like.
Is that two yards?
We'll add it there for you.
That's a four yard, is an eighty-three.
Yeah.
Uh, in town. Well, out of town, all the time, but that's eighty-three's aren't temporary.
Well, add that to my motion, or just do that prices for the parent businesses.
Well, I, I had told it ninety-five.
Oh, okay.
So which is considerably higher than what Mike Richard McCarty's.
Yeah.
It is on the way, we are driving over there, again.
Yeah, but you gotta keep everything the same, I mean, if you're out of town, you're gonna have to charge everybody the same.
Well, to a certain extent, McCarty's is on the way, so don't cost them the extra.
It don't matter.
Well, it does, because, but you're talking, just like when you're gonna charge them more for stickers, because you got charges for our service, that's where I'm trying to get that dumpster. So, they had no problem with ninety-five dollars dumpster, they, absolutely, they had no problem.
I'm just saying that, one guy's gonna say, well, he's not paying that for a dumpster, he's out of town, why are we paying that much for a dumpster?
They're gonna be paying more than what these people are, because they, I'd say, they had no problem with that, they had absolutely, it's gonna fail.
I'm just trying to keep e- even, to make it e- even.
What we're feeling, for a dumpster, that's cheap.
If this expands further, like, say, you know, Bering is really close by, it'll be faster to drive, you know. Faster to pick up the trash than it will be to drive there, right? Uh, further out towns, like, I don't know, Novelty, and Newark, North City, yeah.
We're not gonna, we're just. And again, if you, if you took them there, consideration down the road or something, they're still on the way to the dump. If you go down, or go down one of those six, they're still on the way, the dump are coming back in the dumps, they're still on the way.
You just have to watch how much you get.
Would be going over there. Hurdling, same thing, hurdling's on the way. It's actually close to driving six or seven miles to Bering, so, but, they didn't, they take that on.
This is, this is in town, you know, if you want, want to throw down, it's just temporary, not a regular, but, well, I'm, I'm. Go ninety-five dollars, okay.
That's what I told the player.
That's cheap, cheap, call Merkel, I said, that's cheap, call Merkel.
Yeah, that was four yards, what I told them, they said.
I second it.
You second it, okay.
The way they talk, that's about the size, then they tell them what the business.
For a four yard dumpster?
But I think they're four. Make a motion to second the motion for.
Twenty-eight dollars a month.
For eight stickers.
For eight stickers.
Three dollars if they want more.
Uh, three dollars a sticker for extra.
Ninety-five dollars for a four-yard dumpster, and accordingly, if they, if they wanted to, or for some reason, they would want it, I don't know, if they wanted it, but it would be higher, or.
Yeah.
What'd you figure up over there, on the dumpsters, four dumpsters, that'd be a month?
Three, four, ten, ninety-five.
Be four or five dumpsters a month now.
You'd trade a ninety-five dollars, you know.
Is that including the late, probably not, that's not figuring, I just, you just have to check with them.
Two more there.
Check with them and see if they.
Those are picking the four yard.
I don't believe so. He's saying, uh.
The ones that are.
Four yards.
I thought there was a six yard, but it's like what they have in Casey's, that size. I think bigger.
Well, they won't have a problem filling it until, like, on the holidays, that'd be the time, then they might have to dig that.
Yeah.
Yeah, perhaps get careful.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
More trash?
All right, motion made in the sector. Do it one day a week, along with what we're voting on, everybody, do it one day a week, and then we're gonna let run that, see where we're out on that, getting back out of it, we ain't gonna have it, but. But the prices on the dumpster, everybody understand what we're voting on?
And one day a week.
One day a week.
Twenty-eight dollars a month for eight stickers, plus three dollars for each extra sticker, and ninety-five dollars a month for a four-yard dumpster.
That's what you wanna do.
Okay. Out of town.
That's if they want it.
Those, those are the out-of-town numbers.
If they want to.
Yeah, that's a whole.
Pick up more dumpsters along the way, or whatever.
And one day a week, pick up any dinin'.
Which will be on months.
Everybody understand what, what we're talking about? Okay, all in favor?
No, I don't know. Okay, one, two, three, four, still, I guess.
All opposed? Put my phone number on there, please, call me.
Okay, now we'll go on there to get off that button. Ryan.
You got one for me?
All right.
Do you want this for me?
Any questions? Yeah, I got one over there. The charity work's set up, I'm handling them now. Um. I've been in training this week, me and David's gonna be in training all week. And I had to come back through my report, I noticed there's a couple. Spelling errors on there. Any questions about anything on the report? Questions about any concerns we need to address? Another couple. More yards in town, we need to get to contact owners again, need them all again. But I, shaping up pretty good. Um, the stop sign at Fort Church? Anybody gonna buy there to see what they thought?
Downtown, I don't seem very useful, but that's just me. Because you're just, you're talking half a block, and a place for half a block, ain't you, I mean.
They went in there.
I, 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 I'm coming down, I, I, I just like that, you know.
Fort Church.
Going the other way there, Church Street, they're doing just a little stuff.
There's, there's stops, the stop sign the other way, you know, on the.
I know they're talking about kids, but there's kids there for years, and so, I, I mean, it's whatever, but, I mean, what safety, but.
And I'm talking to, uh. Mark Keen over again, he's been in contact with John Shaw, they're still trying to, you know, I told him, we're gonna have to get something going. On that building up there, you just can't, you know, you just can't leave it like it is, or either gonna have to, you know, make some progress, and, you know, if they're gonna, if they think they can rebuild, they need to start. You know, if they think they can fix this, and we need to get something done, so, we can't keep, you know, can't just essentially keep that road blocked forever, so. They're gonna have to do something, they're working on it.
He keeps thinking, I wanna get a condo, and she needs to get one in here.
Yeah, we need to make a move on it, if you're gonna do.
I done get ahold of this week, or something, try to. Get a time frame.
Um, another thing I had, we got this in the mail, and, you know, the CIT training that David and I are going to this week, the other guys have been to before, this is my first time. It's free, they have it a couple times a year, me and David's going this week, and later on in the year, they have one to make, and I think Mike. Going by September, you know, she's gonna go to that, so that knocks out a lot of our training, it's free, you know, just get there. Um, we do have other things we have to do, as far as like racial profiling and stuff, uh, the other guys, if they can still, they're all commissioned to the county. If they can still receive the free training from the Sheriff's Association. Online, it's not a big deal. I've checked with them, and I haven't gotten a response back yet. Um, this, we got, because I'm not commissioned to the county. Um, this we got is eighty dollars per officer, I checked online, it said sixty-nine. Um, I was wondering if, because we have budgeted fifteen hundred per train. And. If we're, you know, knocking all our hours out for free, and free training, and just need to get, you know, eighty bucks a year to fulfill the rest of our stuff, I think that's a pretty good deal. And I was wondering, you know, if we can't get, go with this, or something comparable, I just wanna make sure that I've got permission to go ahead and interrupt, you know, me, or whoever. Needs, you know, additional training, you know, if we, if we can do that, I think we're. I just wanted to make sure that I had permission and authorization, that I could go ahead and interrupt me, or the other three, you know, because it's me, Mike, Tisha, and David. You know, enter into the online, because that's, that's the way the training is going nowadays, it's basically all online, or some, you know, like, this one is just a miracle, or they have, you know, this one. Training, a week long, where you knock most of your stuff out, but, I just wanna make sure that we can, we can go ahead and do that.
So it's, you say eighty dollars per officer?
Per year.
Per year?
If the other guys need, if, if they can do their stuff for free, the Sheriff's Associate, Sheriff's Association online, and they choose to do there, do it.
Yeah.
But I wanna make sure if they want or prefer to go this route, it would be okay. I mean, I'm not saying just this one for sure, but this is, I mean, we got this, it's, uh, the Missouri Police Chiefs Association, they're affiliated with it. Online, I looked, it said sixty-seven dollars a year, per officer, the guy that brought this said eighty dollars, I'm gonna have to check. It's not that big a deal, but something comparable, you know, to this. Other than that, I don't think I have too much, unless you guys have questions, concerns.
Eighty yards in there, that probably will got them kind of knocked down.
There's some that have been having to make some revisits.
But we.
Better like that, right, isn't it?
Yeah.
So what do you guys think on the, on the revisit, I think, if we have to ask them again, jump it up a little bit? What, what is, what is that, what?
I mean, I mean, it's just, not revisit as far as finding somebody, it's revisit as, say, going up and saying, well, just for instance, next door, at a Richard. I asked him here a while back, he voted.
Yeah.
I seen him again the other day, the grass getting long again, he said, yeah, I'm gonna run up there and, this weekend, well, that was last weekend, so, yeah. God, I noticed today, I haven't got to it yet, I mean, just revisiting the reminder, reminder, I guess, tell people, you know. Need to do something.
Well, come by and tell you, you need more yards.
Yeah. Need some more than that, though.
I got some around it, but it's good.
That one, you take care of it. But the drywall has helped them some.
Yeah, yeah, it's, it's not growing very bad.
It's helped them, considerably, sure.
But I mean, like, we have, we got a lot of them knocked out.
A lot of holes, yeah, it looks, looks a lot better, so.
And the guy, I guess, got the dumpster, I mean, that was my other thing, was gonna mention, because he wanted to pay so much to get rid of stuff, but I guess.
That were very, very small.
Yes.
Okay.
So that, that whole deal, the, him wanting to pay a certain amount of price for trash pickup, but. He got a dumpster, and that's the end of that. Nothing else?
Okay. What else you have? We had an application from Kenny Doyd, Dooling, uh, this is, I got a little better pictures of it, so that, that's where the house is. And she gets that one picture, that's very good, and so, that's what they're wanting to move up to that location.
This one.
Yeah. Painting on painting it, and, and taking the cam, when it goes, and then take the roof off the wall and put on the, other one, you know, stuff's kinda.
Yeah, that area's got four.
That's what the plan was.
Are they building a, he's putting on block, uh, foundation?
Right, I'm sure, that's what it is now, yeah, no, I, the way I got it is, yeah.
Yeah, that's what it has, is.
Yeah, well, it's just a.
Cinder blocks.
Side, and have a blue tender roof.
What they're gonna use for foundation.
House will be ten foot shorter, twelve foot says another thing, current house, I, way, I'm just putting on blocks like it is, I'm sure is what their plans are. What I, you know, I mean.
I mean, it's gonna be, the setback will be plenty, won't it?
Basically, about what's, the house is set, like you said, it's gonna be, if you read there, it says, the current house is thirty-four and a half, by forty, and the new house will be ten feet shorter. With twelve foot long, longer width, so it'll be, it'll set closer to.
Where the, where the one is, which the one that is there is the post.
Because it's, so if you look at that, see, there is a little shed back here, it sets pretty close to the road up here, but anyway, I can.
It's a double, I do, I can just spread that out a little.
K, they don't have a lot of room to clean there.
Yeah, it's probably gonna, this is.
Yeah.
I mean, that's not by.
Little shed, it's quite a ways.
They say if they can move it, if they can move it. Do I? That's what I'm thinking.
Oh, that's hard, that's two houses gone.
Yeah, exactly. But it'd be approximately, the way I get it, approximately where that house is gonna be, be a little longer. Did you see it, you see it?
Yeah.
There's quite a lot of room behind that house.
Yeah, that's a pretty, that's a lot.
There's a lot of room behind it, and they can go back quite a ways, still be quite a ways from, that's.
It's been a while, there's nobody lived in this house. It's been, how long have they been gone, it's been a while.
I believe in, I guess, some acid, there's something like that.
Oh, that's, I asked Janie Anderson, and she said, nobody lived there since the bushes.
I don't see a problem.
So I think that this house needs to be moved, and, so she'll say.
We go away, Bush died.
You're letting that right seconded.
Wait a minute, you, Ryan Mason?
In the nine, yeah, nineties to the nineties, wasn't it?
Okay, motion been made, approve it, and second it, all in favor?
So.
All opposed?
And he says on there, including summer.
So I expect summer of eighteen, so I.
Right, we don't want it to be summer of nineteen.
No, I, I think she's wanting to move, she lives at.
Oh, and, and also you abstain.
You can't go, go, put your son somewhere, but anyway.
Thank you for abstaining.
Uh, let's see, then we had a liquor license, so that, we've already signed that for the new convenience stores, that, yes way, I guess is, famous, was what that.
Yes, yes way, yes. They have.
Just for BB was.
I need that changer signed.
They, yeah, they haven't had anything of these grand openings, or.
Yeah, I think they just, they just. Was anxious to get in, I guess, so.
So, yeah.
Oh, there is something, something.
We need a motion, we need a motion to approve a liquor license.
I can order something.
Uh, that was just a temporary.
Temporary, okay.
They had a, a state temporary license, because we didn't give the time to argue.
Is it in a person's name, or is it just under the name of the business?
Where, yeah.
Blue Duckie Gas Convenience Rental LLC.
BBL, doing business as yes way, number eleven thirty-six.
Yeah. BBA, yes way.
I'll say it.
All in favor? All opposed? Nice, done that. Uh, I know the last meeting, we had a little concern about the last book hold, down to court, uh, there, there's what they look like now.
Look there.
Have the fifteen dollar fixed. So, I.
Are they all that bad, or just the one?
No, all three, I fixed them all, so. Do you understand, and, you know, is it perfect?
Looks a lot better.
Looks a lot better, didn't you? And so, anyway. Tennis court, there's much rock out there, is that where it's standing off, or is that where that? Some of it's cleaned up and stuff, you know, we've been, you know, they've been working on it and stuff, so, they have painted up a lot of stuff down there, it looks a lot better than it did.
Yeah.
I did put some of the bills was at Farmer's Home, and I think it's worth a good use, you know, you paint it up, people do use it all the time, so. You know, we'll tell a few things to, you know, maybe the merry-go-round or something, I think it's, it was all the cement, and I don't know what the cement's kind of give, it's really water. Bend over, I don't know, we can get down there maybe, and, oh, we got redo it, I don't know, it's, it's cement, it's skied up, gray, I mean. Crickets, you know, I seen someone built that way, but this one, I don't think.
See, it's been that way a long time.
As a guy down, maybe it's something with, you know, Debbie's, what, a lot of work, she's painted a lot down there, she's got a lot of paint, maybe, but it's not, I said.
She does.
You know, it'll take a whole lot sometimes, but.
Joe saying about.
He said, on that report I read a while ago, that he hasn't got anything back coming, uh, but, uh, they hadn't got back, but. Uh, waiting for it to get the bid for the park back to go on repairs, and everything, he said they've been really busy, he told them, we're sorry, but they've been really busy, and they were trying to get what they, go by the next month and stuff, so. They are having a. Friday night, they're gonna have a, uh, it's your free will donation, fish fry, just kind of promote the farmer's market up here in the parks, uh, just. Uh, they're, they are asking for, you know, if somebody, if you want to donate, like, a hundred dollars, or something, it's free will.
Is that the Herdland Fire Department, or who is it?
They're gonna cut, they're just in on, they're just gonna cut, they're in on promoting it, and they're in on, have to buy the sign, and all, it just basically, the school made the sign, and what you send it, looks really, really nice up there in the yard.
Yeah.
Tell you a little bit more about what it's all about, but it's just promoting, getting people to town, and just kind of promoting that, and, you know, county court's putting some in on it, I know, and just. You know, some of the businesses are donating some of their money around on it, and.
Chambers put in pro- a hundred bucks so far, and they've had some private donors.
Based on all they want to do, is kind of cover a little bit of expense for the oil, the fishing, the free will, and money's gonna go back to.
The money will go back into the farmer's market.
And pay for the sign.
Help pay for the sign, help pay for future advertising.
Commission paid for the sign back there right now, and me and the three commissioners, we just give the school a donation, just from us, just, you know, so they've done a really nice job on the sign, and stuff, so.
They did a beautiful job on the sign.
Yeah, if you, if you haven't seen it, just stop and look at it, it's really, really, really nice, and stuff, really, really good, and stuff, so, they've done a wonderful job. Something we can repaint down the road, and just take the vinyl out the inside of it, spray paint it white, and get the vinyl back there, so, it's, it's really nice, it's just something to, well, donate a hundred dollars, a hundred and fifty dollars from the city, I think it would be.
Individually, you can donate, but the city can't really donate.
The city gives Corn Fest, what, a thousand dollars?
Yeah, we have to have a whole contract written up.
Hmm.
Uh, which we do have a contract with Corn Fest Committee, with the city attorney will draw up, and we tell, we don't, but, uh, but we can't just donate.
Well, we would love for you to come to the fish fry, it's a free will donation, um, all of the money goes to a good cause, they're gonna do fish and chips. And it's gonna start at five, the actual farmer's market is a long one, it goes from eleven AM until seven PM every week, every Friday, we would love to have you there, um. This is our first, like, event during the farmer's market, and so, the more support we can get, I think, um, the better. Um, this is our first, like, event during the farmer's market, and so the more support we can get, I think, um, the better off we'll be. Vendors are coming, you know, we're starting to get more vendors, uh, we're starting to build more interest.
People involved in something in town.
Something to do on Friday evening in Edina, and so, um, so this Friday, you know, we would love to see you, city mothers and fathers there, um, to help support the farmer's market here in Edina.
Mother's wild. Like I said, we talked to John, I'll try to get with him then this week, where we're at on the sidewalk over there, like I said, they said they, with the forty five hundred dollars, they would put in eleven hundred, it'll lead to the thirty four hundred.
Was that for the curb, or the whole sidewalk?
That's the whole thing, that's, that, the curb is not really gonna be a curb, they're kind of, it's gonna be basically like it is across the road.
Right.
They're gonna go ten inches deep, and then they'll be sticking up, and that'll use that as a curb, so, because the street is so high, with years of putting asphalt, it just got so high, it just drops off so much.
They're gonna tear it all out.
Yeah.
Curb and everything.
Yeah, and so that's, that's kind of where we're standing on that, I can give John later and see if they can give it their group, see if there's something that they're, what they can go, right now, we're left with thirty four hundred dollars, but that's something we can see what, you know, I'll get with John this week, and maybe, I don't know, so, but that's kind of where we're at on that, so, that's. That's all I had, I don't have nothing else, we're talking about poles, so we can just tell them to go ahead and get one, I don't have anything else, so.
Well, I got, on our permits for the streets, we're supposed to, like, when we do the permit, they fill the rock with the street, but it's costing us more money than a hundred dollar permit, we need to do something that at least break even on it, to do the permit.
When they're digging out the sewer and stuff.
Yeah, when you dig up the street, and plus, we got a lot of this new street that we got, that you're gonna have to cut the concrete out, because of the concrete back in.
For that, and sets that amount, so, we amount, uh, we amending the ordinance to have.
It's been the same price for.
Increased, yeah.
Well, for a hundred dollars, you can't use the asphalt back, no.
It used to be fifty dollars. Yeah, it used to be fifty.
So, I mean, yeah, it's, it's, it's not near enough, like mine, with my house, we fixed it, we put the blacktop back yet, we fixed it three or four times.
Yep.
You know, it's, whatever they did, whatever they did, with this deeper it is, and it takes a lot, sometimes a long time to get that sun, and halftime happens right after you go, you're done the street, and you're digging up the asphalt.
So, did you say like, maybe two hundred dollars?
Load of rock, and what, was it, it's two hundred, and what was the load of rock, remember?
Load that need.
Yeah, it takes a load of rock to fill back.
Yeah.
It was over two hundred, at least fifty dollars for the asphalt to put back.
Yeah.
So we'd be breaking in there at two hundred and fifty.
Yeah, we're not, I'm losing my heart.
Okay, so, yeah, we'll pull out the old ordinance.
See what we can come up with. We've gotta do something there.
Then just to influence the rate.
Well, that's, if you're ever getting a sewer done, it's gonna have to, I mean, pay for it, if they don't, I mean, you can't fix a street for that.
They'll be able to cover your trenches.
Did you say Memphis, did you say how much they charge, or you said that, maybe it was Joe, somebody said, oh, they thought Memphis charged.
They'll play that, I think he said.
Oh, they're gonna play that.
And then.
He got some property, he's gonna.
Yeah, because he had to do one, he, it was like, uh, two hundred dollars. I don't remember now, what he gave that on that one.
Okay, I'll check with.
If we don't do that, they're gonna have to pay for the rock to put back in there or something.
Right, yeah, you know, we turn the, they have plus the rock.
Yeah. I'm afraid if you do that, there's not prepared back anything, you're gonna have to hold the street.
Yeah, and then that's the thing, we've got to.
We got rough roads now.
You make the votes for my group?
I second.
All in favor? All opposed?
Long meeting.